We will wait for your clock.
Yes. Actually, why don't we can go through some of the administrative stuff. We will go ahead and call the Johnston City Council meeting number 21-01 to order. Cindy Roll call please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Soroka?
Here.
I'll begin by reading the COVID-19 information statement due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnston will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. Next item on the agenda is the welcome and would like to welcome everyone that is with us this evening. Cindy, can you tell whether or not we have guests with us?
We do. By the names, I'm assuming they're all here for community development planning type issues.
Okay. Well, I would just share with them that if you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that agenda item to come up and share any comments that you have with the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public comment that will be coming up here shortly to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Change to the agenda this evening.
Hey, council, any changes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move, Martin.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
If.
Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the public communications. We don't have any scheduled public communications this evening, but this would be the time when we would entertain any comments from the public on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council? And if you would, please indicate in the chat box to Cindy that you would like to do that.
Do not see anyone.
Okay. We'll move on to public hearings then. We have one public hearing this evening and that is I'm sorry, did somebody try and say something? Okay. We have one public hearing this evening and that is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed 2021, 2022 capital improvement budget and the proposed capital improvement plan 2021, 22 through 2025 through 2026 in resolution number 2108. And we will open this public hearing at 7:05. I'm guessing Teresa's going to address us on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are painfully aware, we've been talking about the capital improvement plan since last September. We've had several council committee meetings. The Park Board has met on it. We've had presentations at work sessions that again began in September. And we've discussed projects, priorities, and several things throughout these past several months. Included in your packet tonight is a complete CIP public hearing document and with a statement from the city administrator and some financial planning documents that I kind of like to talk through for a little bit. So regarding Jim's message to you, there's the second page of his message. Maybe Cindy, if you could scroll down right there, the top of that second page. Jim proceeds to talk about and remind the council about how we finance these projects. And specifically, I want to make sure the council's aware that the projects we've included in the capital improvement plan have taken our debt capacity to a limit of 98.19% of our legal debt capacity for this coming fiscal year 21, 22. And of that though, only 69.57% of our self-imposed debt limit, which we've talked about that in the past. And as you'll recall, our our policy does say that if the voters have approved of a debt, we wouldn't necessarily count that towards the limit. But I want to focus more on the 98.19%. The issue for the City of Johnston is not that we can't afford to pay debt. The issue with the City of Johnston is that we're growing so fast. We have so much incremental dollars that we generate from our main TIF area, which is the TIF area with the Johnston Town Center, the gateway area and things like that. But that has nothing to, that has no impact whatsoever on the legal debt limit. So it's the it's the balancing mechanism so that you can't get too far out of control and go too crazy and issue too much debt. That's why there is a limit. Now, within a couple of years, we're right back down into a legal limit where you feel more comfortable because we pay off a couple, some big debts and our valuation grows. So every time of year our valuation grows, that limit changes. And when Jim and I talked even last week, there's a couple projects that are in the CIP for next year that, you know, it's possible that we can still, even though they're in there for next year. An example is although there's a great, a nice desire to build the additional kayak launch off of or behind the Hy-Vee fresh market or whatever it's called. Unless development is taking place there for us to spur that on, the city's going to have to incur a pretty good chunk of money to buy some land to do that development. So unless we're willing to do that, that development's going to be kind of held off for a few years. So do we actually issue the debt for that? Those discussions are discussions that we of course always have as it gets closer to time for me to issue debt. Not now, here in January, months and months and months ahead of when I'll need to do that. And we've, and when we've talked about things. There's some other projects that oh, I can't remember off the top of my head now. I told them to Jim, you know, that we could maybe knock down about a million four, even a million four. When we say our debt capacity is at 98.19%, that means that we have the debt capacity to only issue about $2.8 million in case of an emergency. That's not very much money. Another 2 million is just makes you feel even a little bit better if we could delay some of those. So just know that as we get closer and closer to projects and the engineers approving them. Although I've always been kind of saying, are you sure you really need to do this now? I might really be saying, are we sure we need to do this now? As we get past some of these, some of these hiccups and some of these deadlines. So I wanted to take a few minutes and talk through that slowly and make sure that you all understood that. Make sure I can answer any questions you have about that. Make sure you're comfortable with that. Cindy, if you could scroll down to a couple of Matt's sheets. So as an example, if you scroll over to the right, you'll see where he has that highlighted in yellow under the column that says available legal capacity. He has just one number highlighted, 2,635,662. That's the number I'm telling you that in 2021, 22, if we issue all the debt we're talking about, that includes 21A, 21B, all the 33 million for Town Center, all the, everything we've got. That's what's left for us to available, to legally issue if we had to. Then you can see it immediately jumps up to 15 million the next year, 17 million the next year, 28 million, then 41 million. And so it's just, this is, this is your, your linchpin year, which we knew that was going to happen. We have a lot, we have a lot of debt coming on. Who knew we would have Ignite and the Town Center in the same year? You know? We didn't, we had no idea that that was going to happen. So I just want to make sure that, that that's clear to everyone and know that what Matt and I have talked about is how we're structuring the debt, some of the debt out in the coming years. If you go to the next page, Cindy, you can see all those yellow columns are the debts for the next future years. He does have the debt in 21A and 21B. He's had to, he's had to make that 20-year debt basically because it's so much. But then look what he's done for the next 22, 23, 24, and 25. He's got it back down to 10-year debt. That's great news for the City of Johnston. But because this year and this two-year, you know, that's $55 million in debt worth of debt we're issuing in 21. That's a lot of money. We've got a lot of stuff going on. So any questions before I go on about any of the projects or a summary?
Yeah. Teresa, I want to make sure that I understand this. Go back to the first page. So you're, you're, you're telling us not, no, the first, the $2 million. So you're telling us that kind of our, our buffer there is, is $2.5 million. If we have an emergency, that's all that we would have available.
Issue debt.
Right.
That's nothing to do with our reserves, what I have in the bank, any of that type of thing.
Okay. So if we get to a point where we have an emergency and we need more than that, then do we have a plan? Sounds like that's something we need to talk about.
I guess. I guess that's why Jim and I were talking Friday about making sure we're really only going to issue debt for the things we really know we're going to do.
Right, right. So.
So that could even be a little bit more of a buffer. I believe, I don't know, Jim, you could help me here, but I, I believe there was a time before I got here that you guys were at 100% of your legal debt capacity and you didn't have a general fund balance. And so we're not there and we have a general fund balance. You know, worst case scenario, I mean, this would be absolute worst case scenario. I would never encourage you folks to do this, but you know, we've got $800,000 in an equipment reserve fund that's sitting there to buy equipment in the future. You have a water utility and a sewer utility that have a good surplus. You could always loan yourself money from your utilities. Those are the kinds of contingency plans I would, I would bring forward to you at that time, Mayor, but I just don't, I just don't want us to have to use them, but there, there would be some plans there.
Okay. So it sounds like we have some options.
Yes.
I think that we need to have a little more conversation about all of this at our next finance committee meeting.
Okay.
Just make sure that everybody's comfortable with where we're at. What our options are.
Can I ask what, you know, when you say if we run into an emergency, what, what, what does that mean? What kind of an emergency?
Well, the only one I've had since I've been here, Councilwoman Evans, was it was a million dollars, was it a million dollars Matt Griner?
It was a million dollars, Teresa, for that sewer.
The sewer that wiped out in the flood.
It was in.
Now, and that was general fund, which we could have, now we have a stormwater utility. You know, I didn't have one of those then or sewer utility. We just used general fund quickly to do that, Councilwoman Evans. But that's the only emergency I've had where I've had to borrow money in an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
In 15 years, so.
Teresa, just one question for me. On the memo part, I think it was the top of page two with the 98% and 67% or something. I will not pretend to be an expert on understanding this, but I was wondering if you could, I mean, feel free to explain it to me like I'm a fifth grader, but I'm trying to grapple with, like I was reading it and if there's a self-imposed limit at 75% of assess valuation, then why is that, why does it look, why do we look better essentially than the 90%?
That's, that's not, that's not a silly question at all because I'll be honest with you, Scott. I said the exact same thing to Matt Stofel. I said, this makes absolutely no sense to me. And so he, he answered me not, and you know, he can't answer in just a yes, no way either.
Of course not.
But he cut, this is what he said. Because you have so much debt that is considered voter-approved, your voter-approved debt is projected to account for 29% of your total GO debt. Since your internal limit is 75%, the legal constraint is more restrictive than your internal debt limit. If your voter approval debt was less than 25% of your overall GO debt service, then your debt policy would be more restrictive constraint. And then he's got the numbers here. I will forward this to you and any, any of you, if you'd like to see it, I can forward it to all of you. He has it projected out, but my legal, legal debt limit is the self-imposed debt limit, the projected debt limit, the voter levy. He's done it all and explained it all to me. I will gladly share that with each of you.
No, that'd be helpful. So it basically sounds like the legal debt capacity includes all the, including voter-approved GO.
Yes.
And then
Yes.
Basically just to self-impose. Okay, that makes more sense. Okay, thank you.
Teresa, even with our self-imposed debt, I mean, our, our policy is we don't go above 75% unless it's voter-approved.
Correct? Right.
But we do allow ourselves to go up above that 75%. And as Teresa mentioned, we're actually at 98% now. But, but if our voters approve, you know, debt that we're issuing, then we do allow ourselves to go above the 75. We're just in that position right now. Just with everything.
We're within our self-imposed debt limit. We're just really high up there. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Teresa, this is Councilman Cope. So I just want to make sure I'm looking through the documents. And so for this 21, 22 year, I see there's kind of, it's kind of a spreadsheet document. And it has grand total all the way through and it looks like it's like 21, 964, 290. That, that's how much debt, is that the amount of debt that you intend, that we would intend to be issuing in 21, 22? And that helps us kind of take us down to the 98% level? Is that right? Am I looking at that right?
Part of what's in the, I'm not sure exactly which page you're looking at. Is there a page number on what you're looking?
It's page three. So it's, 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 so it's of the, of the PDF that's 166 pages long.
Okay.
It's the 10th.
Okay, so page three here.
Yeah. And it says, so it looks like last year, so 21, 22 are the, is the year we're talking about, right?
Right. Except that in 2021 and 21, 22, I've had to literally cross off certain things because we did issue some upfront for 21 and not all of them. So that, the $21,000 total is not for all debt. That's for all projects. If you scroll up, Cindy.
It's 21 million, right?
Yeah, 21 million, I'm sorry. I need the page that is the one that says projects by financial. Forgot you bookmarked stuff for me. Projects by funding source. So next page. So all of those general obligation bond taxes. So even though it's, see where it says 18,163, 7,150, the City Hall construction, the 13 million for City Hall construction and the 19 million, which is down below on the TIF bonding issue, 19 million for the infrastructure. We haven't issued that debt yet. Now it's going to fall in 21 instead of getting, because we didn't get done. So even though it's in.
I guess the reason I sort of, I mean, as I look at the, as I look at that 21 million dollar projects, there's a lot of money, like millions of dollars, like five, I think it was like 5 million for extension of the water service in the Northwest area.
That's not even what I'm talking about.
Well, okay. So.
Those aren't GO-ish, those aren't GO debt. So
Okay.
Those aren't, those aren't the projects we're talking about. We're talking more about specifically, we'll be talking about the, the big City Hall project. You scroll up for me, Cindy. So, and we, and we have to issue TIF debt. Now, not all of that, even though I said those big numbers, even if it's paid for by TIF or helped by anywhere else, it's still going to be a GO debt. So that still affects your debt limit. So even these TIF projects where you're doing the intersection Merle Hay and, and 62nd, or you're doing Johnston Drive and Merle Hay Road and the new street intake night. And then you're doing 54th Avenue reconstruction. We have to finish the second half of that. And you're doing the Ignite that we just issued a little bit ago, 2.25. Then you have the Town Center. All of those affect, those all go towards your debt limit. And then if you went up to the page above where you have your general obligation, oh, not so far, sorry, Cindy. This page where you have, we're going to have to issue debt for the Tressle, the Tressle Bridge unless, this is something you guys consider to talk about, is $575,000 from the Tressle to Tressle Bridge. Something you want to use local option sales tax money for? Of the money we know we received the first six months of the year, you haven't decided what project we can spend that money on. Is that something that we don't issue debt for? Do we, a pumper truck, we already issued debt for that. So City Hall, Construction of Johnston Commons, we haven't issued, we did issue debt for that. It's 86th Street Trail, 1.6 million dollars. You just approved the bid the other night. We have to issue debt for that. The water trails that I was just talking about, Lou Clarkson. Northwest, Northwest Beaver Drive overlay, 4.7 million dollars. That's to finish that project. That's a big one to issue debt for.
Yeah, I mean, I think the challenging part for, for me is, is that, you know, it's hard to, you know, the format of this is a little bit hard because you start getting into things that are subject to the, to the debt limit and not subject to the debt limit. And then you have projects that we have, you know, for instance, if it's a project that we have already issued the contract for, it's sort of hard to kind of say, well, maybe we don't need to follow through on that project as opposed to other projects that we're not as far along on. But I mean, I guess my, a couple of different, kind of my initial reaction is one, I, I, I have conf, I mean, you know, being that close to 98% that makes me a little nervous. And I guess I'm a little, kind of wish we'd had that, this conversation before we were at the public hearing part of this process. So.
Yeah, I didn't know it, I'm sorry, till last week.
So this kind of, that's a little bit kind of frustrating from my part. But I'm also, that frustration is offset by the sense that I feel very confident that we should be able to figure out with either, you know, if, if some sort of emergency comes along, whether it be the remaining $2 million or other sources that we have, I think that we can, we should be able to figure out a way. And it looks like it's sort of a one-year issue. Now granted, I mean, one of the reasons it's a one-year issue is that, you know, we, as each year we'll, we add projects. And so we have to kind of probably think about just being a little slowing down in that process a little bit. So.
Yeah, no, I, I understand and I apologize that I didn't get that to you. I, I, I was shocked myself, I guess is all I can say.
But Teresa, we can have more conversation about that at the next finance committee meeting. Other, other questions or comments from the council for Teresa?
I think when we talk about it, that finance committee, I would like to, at that time is when I would like to talk about some of these projects that maybe we could consider recommending loss to the council or something.
That would be good.
Well, and I think the question there too is whether, I mean, you know, is, you know, how, where does, you know, what are some of the options for those lost dollars? And, 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 you know, looking at all, and is that, are any of those are general fund ramifications too? Because, you know, we got to, we have general fund budget we're going to get to at some point here. Not tonight, but in a few months. So we got a lot of kind of challenging juggling things we've got to do.
Sure.
I agree. Other comments or questions for Teresa? If not, this is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience that has joined us this evening that would like to comment on the proposed budget? If not, we will close the public hearing at 7:29. We have resolution number 2108 before us. Do we have a motion to approve it?
Move approval, Cope.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will, Theresa.
Second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Cindy vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 8A, consider approval of the second reading of ordinance number 1046, an official zoning map amendment for approximately 8.93 acres from AR to R1100 with an overlay. The subject property is located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive, PZ case 20-23.
This is Aaron Wolf on behalf of Clayton. And it's the second reading of the ordinance. There's been no changes since the first reading and nothing to add. No comments from the public sense. And I have nothing more.
Okay. Council, have any questions for Aaron? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1046?
Move approval, Cope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote please. We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight B, consider the following items related to preliminary and final plat for Chesterfield Estates Plat one, located north of Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue between Northwest one hundred and fourth and Northwest one hundred and seventh streets. Resolution twenty-one dash zero one, a resolution accepting a petition for waiver for future improvements to Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue adjacent to Chesterfield Estates Plas- Plat one. Resolution twenty-one dash zero two, a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Chesterfield Estates Plat one.
Uh, this is Aaron Wolf again. Um, Cindy, would you start by opening the vicinity map for this project? And then shortly after that, the preliminary plat, which is, uh, next to the vicinity map. Um, this facility map just illustrates where this project is located, um, in the blue cross hatch there. Uh, the owner of thirty acres north of Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue and west of Northwest one hundred and fourth court uh, has submitted a minor subdivision that creates a ten-acre lot one and a twenty-acre outlaw for future development. Um, Cindy, would you now pull up the preliminary plat? And so this plat drawing here illustrates, um, the boundaries of Lot One, which is ten acres at the front. Uh, there's some existing structures that'll remain on the lot. And Outlet Z is behind it. It's approximately twenty acres in size. Um, as a minor subdivision, there are no proposed extension of utilities at this time. There's no proposed street extensions. And typically, it would be a pretty straightforward affair and fairly procedural. Um, but we want to take this a little step further and talk about how the developer would like to further subdivide Outlet Z in the future. And Cindy, if you would, then pull up that, uh, development concept that we started with. It was that third drawing, that one there. Again, this isn't, you're technically not, you're not taking action on this development concept tonight, but, um, as I stated, the developer would like to take that outlot and, uh, divide it into twenty-eight single-family homes in the future. And that subdivision would be accessed from Northwest one hundred and fourth court, um, which feeds the existing subdivision there to the east. Yeah, there, she zoomed in and you can see the street label on one hundred and fourth court. Um, traffic would take a, yeah, head west on Northwest Eightieth Avenue to access the subdivision. Um, you can see that the twenty-eight lots, um, a number of them are, um, around that cul-de-sac there. And Northwest Eightieth would extend to the west property line where it would temporarily dead-end until a future development phase would extend it even further west and back to Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue. Um, and while, again, it's not on the agenda tonight, it, um, it will be submitted in the future for your consideration, and at that time, the developer would have to submit a preliminary and final plat for your consideration. Um, we'd go through a number of steps before, before that development concept could become a plat and, uh, but we, the developer has put this out in front of the neighbors, um, and let them know he's also seeking comment from the council, um, seeking your feedback at this time because he's operating under his period of due diligence on the property. And there's some code language that he wants to, uh, put out there and, and, um, get councils take on. Um, there are thirty-three existing lots that are accessed from Northwest one hundred and fourth court. That's that existing subdivision. And this future subdivision would add twenty-eight more. That would bring the total number of lots to sixty-one lots that are all accessed from Northwest one hundred and fourth court. And there are two code sections and code ordinances that can limit the number of lots, um, on a dead-end street or a cul-de-sac. And one of those code sections is found at chapter one eighty point two seven. And that section stipulates that a cul-de-sac is limited to twenty-five homes unless the street widths are increased to accommodate emergency access. Um, the fire department has issued comment indicating they're satisfied that the existing and proposed road surfaces will accommodate emergency access. Um, when that existing subdivision was, um, was created, Northwest one hundred and fourth court was widened up to Northwest Eightieth. And Northwest Eightieth was widened to, um, to accommodate the, the safety issues and the fire department's concerns. And so likewise, um, any of those street extensions would have to, uh, pass muster with the fire department as well um, in order to exceed that twenty-five, uh, homes on, on a cul-de-sac. Uh, there's additional code language at chapter one eighty point two-nine that is related to temporary dead-end streets, which again, I talked about the, how this would be a temporary dead-end until a future development phase would allow a second access back to Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue. Um, that language at chapter one eighty point two-nine allows up to fifty single-family homes until other development phases offer a secondary access provided adequate provisions are provided for emergency access. And I want to point out, it's pretty common practice for council to waive this code provision and exceed fifty lots when the applicant can take steps to address access and safety issues to the satisfaction of the fire department. And some examples of when the council has waived that fifty lot limitation can be found in the, the various Northwood subdivisions, uh, Cross Haven North and, and Ridgedale Heights, which was, um, recently, recently approved. In each of those instances, um, after the fire department gave it a thumbs up and, and, um, and they were satisfied with the emergency access, safety issues were addressed, the council waived that fifty lot, uh, limitation. Um, I did recently put this development concept in front of the fire department, and they had an opportunity to review the proposed twenty-eight lot subdivision, and they submitted a letter stating they have no comment on this, on that proposal in which that signals they're satisfied with the road widths and access that's proposed on that, on that development concept. Um, again, tonight, you're considering two resolutions. Resolution twenty-one oh two would approve the minor subdivision, and again, that's, that's not this twenty-eight lots. It's simply taking the thirty acres and dividing it into one ten-acre lot and one twenty-acre lot for future development. That minor subdivision proposes no extension of streets and no extension of public utilities. It's setting it up to be further subdivided in the future. Um, that's resolution twenty-one oh two. Resolution twenty-one oh one accepts a petition of waiver for future road improvements to Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue. Again, that's pretty procedural for, for any typical plat that we pass that's adjacent to an unimproved road surface. Um, so both of those two agenda items are, are fairly mundane, but we're also looking for you to comment, and I believe the, the public wishes to comment tonight on how the developer intends to further subdivide that outlot in the future. And, um, he specifically is looking for, for input on your willingness to exceed that number of lots that can be accessed from a temp- temporary dead-end street. Um, with that being said, um, I think we, I don't know if the developers joined us. I can't see the list of attendees here. Um, I, his engineer should be Eric Cannon. Um, I believe Eric was planning to attend tonight. Um, Will Van Z is the developer. If you have any questions for them, you can ask those now. Um, otherwise, like I said, I believe there's a number of public who, who, they not only submitted written comment that I included with the staff report, but I think they wish to make public comment tonight.
Does the, uh, does the developer have any comments on what, uh, is being proposed here?
Mayor, members of council, this is Eric Cannon with Snyder and Associates. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. And again, I apologize. I'm actually at a theme park in Florida right now, so if you get some background noise, um, that's what you're hearing here, but. Um, first, just want to say, appreciate, uh, uh, Aaron's presentation there. I think that hits all the highlighted points that we wanted to present tonight. Um, one keynote I want to make, make aware here is that the developer has reached out to the neighborhood, um, introduced a project to them, tried to open dialogue. Um, doesn't sound like there's a lot of desire to have much conversation as the neighborhood is pretty much in opposition to the project for the most part. Um, we understand the concerns as far as they feel like live on a dead-end road. They don't want the connection. They don't want any development in their backyard. Um, but the reality is, as Aaron pointed out, um, one hundred and fourth was built at a larger street section, a larger right-of-way to accommodate this kind of traffic, um, and accommodate this street extension, um, that will happen. Again, this is a temporary condition, um, something that has happened multiple times within the city. And I think the developer has even made another step above and beyond. Um, they have secured a construction easement from the property owner to the west, which will allow all construction traffic, um, during development to enter through that property to the west and avoid the neighborhood in its entirety. It would keep the connection to the neighborhood barricaded, um, until the point, um, that it's ready to, um, be open for traffic, um, for the neighborhood. So I think that's a big leap of faith by the developer to go ahead and acquire that easement from the property owner to the west in response to the concerns from the neighborhood. Um, so I, I hope that shows the effort and the faith that the developer is making here to do everything possible to make the project work in harmony with the existing neighborhood that's there. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have and appreciate your guys' input on this, knowing that you're not taking formal action on this, but obviously they've got a window to either acquire the property or not. Um, we do have the preliminary plat for the twenty-eight lots into the city now, and that will be on the next coming meeting here, um, end of the month for the formal resolution. But by that time, their, their due diligence window will have expired, so we're really just looking for feedback from council tonight to see if, if this continued support somewhere across Haven and the other developments um, would be consistent with this one as well. So, thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
So, council, I have any questions for Eric or Aaron?
I wonder, can they get into more detail on this easement and the construction road? Is it gonna be a hard surface? Is it gonna be rock? Is it gonna be mud? Is it gonna stay after the fact? Can they talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, again, this is Eric Cannon. Um, so my understanding, uh, is that they have acquired a, a construction easement from the property owner to the west. Um, it would allow for a granular construction road to be put in and installed, um, during construction of the development. Um, so that, um, all the lowboys, excavators, all that kind of equipment that would go, um, into a neighborhood traditionally to, to construct something, um, adjacent to it, would avoid that neighborhood in its entirety. Um, so that would get, get installed prior to any, anything happening at the property. Um, and that would be maintained and be active throughout construction. Um, and then again, the developer's committed to barricading that access so that, you know, a contractor or somebody that's, you know, maybe not aware of it, understands that they can't even get into that property through the existing neighborhood, that they have to use this access to the west.
Aaron, can you show us, can you show us where that, uh, construction road would be?
Be just west of the horse stables. Um, keep going west a little bit more there, Aaron. West is at the bottom of the page there. Yeah, right there. Yep, right there. So through that property, um, up into the subject property that you see the twenty-eight lots that are proposed.
Eric, this would be Northwest one hundred and seventh there. Is that right? Where, um, Cindy, if you put your mouse back, uh, go toward Northwest Seventy-eighth Avenue. Eric, uh, that intersection there, that's Northwest one hundred and seventh. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. Just for the council to get some bearing there.
So Aaron or Eric, can you help me understand, um, if the road, I'm assuming that is the top of the page north?
To the left of the page is north.
Okay, so the, the road that is running, I guess, east and west from the developed neighborhood into what is, uh, what we're seeing here as a, a, a concept of, of, of development.
That road is Northwest Eightieth.
Okay, Northwest Eightieth. If it extends into this new proposed development, what, do, do we know where it goes after that? Do we have any idea what we can expect in the future? Because I, I, I appreciate the, um, neighbors' concerns about, you know, the road coming back out to Seventy-eighth Avenue.
So again, conceptually, that road would extend to the west into that subject property where they acquired the easement, turn south and go back down to Seventy-eighth Avenue. Um, the developer does not own or control that property at this time. He has been in discussions with that property owner, which is how he was able to acquire the easement. Um, but at this time, that, that property is not part of the development. Um, the only thing being developed is the twenty acres where you see the proposed twenty-eight lots.
Eric, um, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ma.
Well, it, let me, let me just share this thought as, as this was being presented, uh, deceiving, you know, we talk a lot about, um, you know, what our ordinance requires in terms of emergency access. Is there, is there a concept of emergency egress? You know, what, you know, is there a situation that we would be concerned about that because there are so many road, there's so many houses, residential houses on this road? If something were to happen in the middle of it and people had to leave their homes, but there's no way to get out. I mean, is that, is that something? Something that's ever considered?
Like it's similar to Cross Haven, Northwood Estates and Ridgedale Heights. Um, all those developments were more than fifty lots on a single point of access for those developments. Um, the, the easement that we're talking about would be just for construction to avoid construction traffic to the neighborhood. So the, the proposed sixty-one lots would be on the single point of access, um, back up to seventy-eight.
And I would defer to the, uh, to the fire chief on what they're looking for, um, when, when they would lend approval to a, a subdivision that exceeds fifty lots. Um, but I, I believe they want to see wider, wider streets to allow more maneuverability of the, uh, of the fire apparatus.
And, and I guess, Aaron, my, my comment is, you know, it doesn't matter how wide the street is. If people can't get out, is that a problem?
And get out, maybe elaborate on that for me if they, um, now, when Eric talks about the temporary access during construction, what he means is, um, construction of the public utilities and the public streets. Um, I don't believe they intend to limit, uh, con- construction traffic for the homes, um, through that easement. But Eric can, uh, can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe what he's saying is all the heavy construction traffic that you would see, uh, the heavy equipment that would come in and move the dirt around, uh, do the grading, um, the, the cement contractors that would come in and, uh, utility contractors that would come in and put in those public utilities and pave that public street. All of the, that construction traffic could be limited to that, uh, easement on the west adjacent property. Um, once that street is, is, uh, is paved, the, um, they would come to us to accept those public improvements before we would approve their final plat. At which time, you know, when we approve the final plat, then any, um, contractor who would come to work on a private home, build a private home, would be able to access Northwest one hundred and fourth court in, in any homeowner, you know, as these, as these homes are built and people begin occupying the homes, um, you know, they would, they would use Northwest one hundred and fourth court as their ingress egress.
And given that one hundred and fourth is thirty-one foot wide, even if you had a car that was parked on the side of the road and another car next to that stalled, you know, or broke down or whatever, you'd still be able to get out, um, even with two cars blocking the roadway. That's part of the premise of having the wider road to accommodate the additional traffic. Um, and that, and that's all consistent with what the city planning efforts have been, comprehensive plan, all those things that identified this as a road that needed to be bigger to accommodate more traffic in these kind of situations, um, as a, you know, a street that's gonna have more connectivity to it than just a single cul-de-sac that it currently serves today.
Other questions for Eric or for Aaron?
Why you go back to, somebody said something about what, what if one of the houses on the south end of one hundred and fourth, there's a, a fire or an emergency, and you've got a fire truck and an ambulance and a squad car, and they've got the street blocked, but then you have somebody that has a heart attack over here in Lot seventeen in the new development. I mean, is there any way possible to take this granular conditioned road and make it a, an emergency route or something like that? Until the next lot gets developed.
We would have to talk to the property owner. I don't think the discussion's been that that would be a permanent situation um, into perpetuity until that point that property does develop. Um, I, I guess that's something we could discuss with them. I know the developer, Will, is on the phone. I'm not sure if those discussions happened at all, but. Again, this is a condition that's not new. I don't know if that's ever been imposed on any of these other developments, Crosshaven, Northwoods, Ridgedale. That all exceed the 50 lots. But I do appreciate the question.
Yeah, I don't know if the fire chief has joined us tonight, but it would be good if he could chime in on his, what his thoughts are about the access on, given this proposal. Is the chief.
I would just note too, we have a citizen that just wants to weigh in as well.
Right, let's finish the council questions and comments first.
Aaron, I have a question. My internet's a little unstable. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Aaron, my question is just a clarification. So tonight we are voting on this plat that. Creates a lot one. And then outlaw. And we are offering opinions to the developer.
That's right. Here's what Cindy just pulled up here, this preliminary plat. There's also a final plat that. You're looking to approve the preliminary and final plat that she's going to open the final for us here. Looks very much like the preliminary. There's not going to be much difference here. Just the topography isn't there, but that kind of helps you see. These are the two lots here, Lot One. It's 10 acres in size. It directly fronts Northwest 78th Avenue and. Outlot Z behind it. Which is 20.3 acres. So that's what you would be approving tonight. You would not be approving the 28 lot subdivision. But the developer is looking for your opinion. Because what he doesn't want to do is end his period of due diligence and then come back to the council with a 28 lot subdivision to have the council say. No way, no how. And then he's stuck with a chunk of property that he can't develop and. Do what he wants to do with it. So he's looking for. Your likelihood or what, under what conditions would you consider waiving as you have in the past that. 50 lot limitation on a dead end, a temporary dead end street. So yes, you're just providing some opinion and guidance on the 28 lot subdivision.
Okay, thank you for that. I will wait until I've heard from the neighbors before issuing any opinions. Thank you.
And Aaron, just for clarification again, for my purposes, the temporary dead end, when you refer to that, that what you're referring to is. It's a dead end until another street is constructed.
That's right. Northwest 80th, which is that existing short stub of pavement there off of 104th. Where it comes to the east boundary of this proposed subdivision. Yeah, it's currently a dead end. And when the developer would extend that down to that next West property line. It would be just extending the dead end for a period of time until we can get it. Wrapped back to 78th Avenue. And again, with, you know, these parcels being under different ownerships, you know, I can't say when that Western parcel would develop. But that's, you know, that's just typical of development. We never know and really we can't. Put everything on hold until everybody decides they want to develop at one time. So that's just kind of, we have to. Negotiate these factors and compromise as necessary when we have situations like this. So I guess what I'm asking is what is the compromise here to make it happen?
And again, that's not, that's not the. The action item that's before us this evening. Does council have any other questions at this time for Aaron or Eric?
Mine, I think, was kind of answered by. Councilman Evans and the mayor's. It was similar to how long the easement and barricade would be up. I guess too, for sharing opinions, I also can share more later, but. Yeah, I guess I just thought I was working under the assumption that that barricade and egress were going to be there. Until it was. A lot more fully developed. I didn't realize it was only for the street. And so I think, you know, I really empathize with the concerns of. The neighbors with a lot of home building, construction equipment moving through. Once that egress and barricades eliminated. So not really a question there, but just some things that I'm thinking about as the discussion goes on.
Other council questions or comments at this time? If not, I know we do have one. Resident who has indicated an interest in making some comments. Joe Sampson, are you?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You bet. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for letting us sit in on this. I know there's a few other neighbors on this call as well. You know, our concern, I think the first comment made was, you know. And I'm a resident of the current development. I think the comment was made that, you know, we don't want to have a development behind us, which, you know, that's obviously not the case at all. In fact, we welcome that. The concern we have is the access to it. You know, like the emails I think that Aaron has shared with all you guys. And just the amount of heavy traffic, the numerous cars in and out of our street and the proposed new development. And, you know, I think the city code is there for a reason to try to eliminate some of that traffic. Our families are. Relatively young on this block and who knows when that next development might be. I mean, it might be five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And it's a very heavy concern specifically for me just to have all that traffic through our street, not just during the development of the project, but. You know, when all the homes are being built and then when all the homes are built, you know, just all the. All the traffic in and out of just that one access. So. We would, I shouldn't say we, I would propose there be another access. Maybe make that temporary access for the development a permanent access. And I think that would make. Everybody in our current development much happier for sure. And really, that's the only comments that I have to say right now. And I appreciate you guys hearing us out for sure.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other residents that are with us this evening that would like to make a comment?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
I can hear that somebody wants to speak, but I couldn't hear what was said.
Sorry, this is Scott Huff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so I'm also a resident of the street and I just want to also add some comments that. As Joe said, I think we're not against development whatsoever. And when the. The builder developers email to us. Along the lines that, you know, we should go forward and agree with this. Otherwise, it could be a smaller lot development come in. You know, obviously, we didn't, you know, I certainly didn't take kindly to that kind of approach. Honestly, we are for it. We just would request that the concern we have is that as this map's been drawn here by Aaron. That there is no timeline for when that road, 80th Northwest would be extended. So again, you know, our view was we were all for the development. But we would argue, why wouldn't the builder, the developer and the property currently. Negotiate a more. Permanent resolution with the egress coming off 78. So that that can then be redrawn, but then you have a in and outbound U-shaped option there for people to access the properties. That's really what we, where we come from and certainly from my perspective where I come from.
I need to make sure that we have your name and address for the record. Could you please spell your name so that Cindy can make sure she gets it correct for our minutes?
Certainly. My name is Scott Huff, H U F, one F for Fred. And my address is 7910 Northwest 104th Court.
Okay, thank you. And Joe Sampson, if you're still on, could you give us your address as well?
Yeah, it's 7914 Northwest 104th Court.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was negligent in asking for that information.
That's okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
This is Steve Olsson. I don't want to repeat anything, but did you have an opportunity to make a few quick comments?
Sure, you bet. Go ahead.
Again, just Steve Olsson and I'm actually at 8001 Northwest 104th Court. So I'm actually at a house that. 80th would go right into, kind of tease right into that at the top of the, top of the road and. Joe and Scott have summarized things, I think, very, very well, fully support their comments. Maybe just a personal context, when we moved into this neighborhood. In May of 2017, in making our decision to purchase this home. When we moved back with some very specific conversations. With the builder related to that road and that, and the code related to that. And one of the conversations was specifically around, are any extensions there need to be? An additional access road built. So when I made the decision to make this purchase, based on the code of the city, that was an expectation that I had. I understand things change. I understand, but I think Scott and Joe's. Comments around the permanent nature and the timing of that additional access road is the key issue. And something I don't know very much personally factored into my purchase decision.
Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Are there any other? Residents that would like to share any comments or concerns this evening?
Yes, this is Scott Van Zee. I'm actually with the developer and a resident on the street at 8018 Northwest 104th Court. I just wanted to clarify with Aaron that. The waiver, the ordinance is only for 11 additional lots, not adding 28 additional lots.
Could you explain that, Scott?
Right, so I believe it, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 60 lots off of the access without 50 lots with. Without another access point. And we only have 33 lots in Plot One on Chesterfield.
Right, the chapter 180.29 says. 180.29 allows up to 50 single family homes until other development phases offer a secondary access. But if you've got, there's 33 existing lots and you're proposing 28 more. Then you would have around 61 total lots that would be coming off of 104th Court. And so, yeah, you would be exceeding the code requirement by 10. Is that, am I missing, am I getting that right, Scott?
Yeah, Aaron, that's the point I'm making is that if there were 10 or 11 lots with less on this plat. It would fall within all ordinances. So the waiver is just for 11 lots until the second access point when the property to the West is developed.
Correct.
Can I ask a question real quick to Mr. Van Zee?
Sure.
So, but, but you're, but there's, the potential would still be, is there a total of 33 lots on this new plot? Is that correct?
There's 28.
28, okay, 28, okay, I didn't know if it was, but there's certainly a potential that all 28 lots would be developed. Before. And the road was extended to the West, right? You're not, you're not just going to develop 11 of the lots. Right?
We're not going to just develop 17, correct. But the point I'm making is that. A 17 lot development could be put in here with access from 80th and 104th with no secondary access and fall within all ordinances of Johnston. The waiver is just for adding 11 additional home sites, which would not have a second access until the road is extended on the property to the West.
Right, I understand what you're saying. Basically, as you need. To get the total to 61, you need a waiver of 11. But you're not just going to build 11 home sites and stop until the road's extended. You potentially would build all 28. And all 28 homes would be developed. Even though, even though that extension hasn't been done, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I can't remember the planning guy that's talking.
Eric?
Aaron?
Aaron, you keep referring to past projects where we have. Allowed this. Have they been to the extent of 11 lots?
I think they've actually exceeded 11. Unfortunately, I'm not the one who worked the Crosshaven projects. I haven't had. I wasn't the planner or worked on that one. Or the Ridgedale one. That's been, the Ridgedale one's been more recent. That was one that Clayton spearheaded. So the facts aren't popping up in my brain as far as how many lots are there. Does David happen to be joining us tonight? Maybe he might be able to shed some light on the number of lots we approved there.
Day boarding, Northwoods probably the. I think that one was. It was about nine or 10 lots extra total. They were 59 or 60 lots. That's the subdivision off of Northwest 70th at Peckham. So west of 86th Street. I don't recall Crosshaven. I think that one is more than that.
David, as I think about Crosshaven and maybe the other developments are different. Crosshaven was, you know, under the. Entire development was owned by one developer. And so we had an idea of when, you know, in the different stages we're going to be developed and how the roads were going to develop. Then Crosshaven.
Yeah, and this was Crosshaven North. So it's the part of the development that's north of the creek. So it's just, it's still developing. And it's a little, it's a slightly, it's more lots, but it's a slightly different situation in that the streets loop. There's just one. You know, a short section, one street that is the in and out. Northwood is virtually the same situation as this, where it was a developer trying to finish the development of their property and didn't have control of the adjoining. Properties. So we didn't know the timing. Ridgedale and Crosshaven definitely. Are different because the developer owned a larger chunk of ground and. It was more of a timing issue.
Mayor, I guess what I would, my thought process on this a little bit is that, you know, I think Aaron or somebody said, you know, part of the purpose of this discussion tonight was whether we. Could provide an opinion or there's some sort of consensus from the council. You know, our thought process on approving this waiver. You know, just speaking from my standpoint, I'm not prepared to give an opinion on that. And I certainly, you know, I don't know that there's consensus as of yet. And my senses are probably a long ways to go until there's consensus. So I sort of think about other times in situations where we've had these types of kind of challenges. Where you've got, you know, I sort of feel like I need more information. I sort of feel like I need to drive out and drive these streets and sort of visualize it a little bit and get a sense of. Are they wide enough that, you know, the situation that one of the council members described of a fire. You know, at the pinch point, is that going to be a challenge? And so I feel like I need to, you know, have a little bit more input from the fire chief on that. I need to. You know, the examples that have been cited of other times that there's been a waiver, I feel like I need more facts. You know, are those situations equivalent or not really equivalent? I think Northwoods could potentially, but I'd have to sort of look at on the map because that road sort of goes out and. And ends. And so there's really only one way back. You got to come back to Peckham and 70th. I'm not sure, you know, Crosshaven, it's hard to know if that's equivalent facts or not. So I guess, you know, my sense would be that, that. We need to have an opportunity. Maybe there's, maybe there's a small group of folks that kind of try to look into some of those fact questions and then come back. You know, at a later point and is able to provide, you know, some thoughts or, you know, does this make sense or not? But I'm certainly not prepared tonight. To say one way or the other, whether I'm prepared to support this waiver for this project.
So what I'm hearing you say, Councilman Copeland, and I agree with you, you know, we can, the council can take action on the resolutions that are before us this evening. So what I'm hearing you say, Councilman Cop and I, and I agree with you, um, you know, we can, the council can take action on the, um, resolutions that are before us this evening. It may not be sufficient from the developer's perspective that, um, that the council can give a thumbs up or thumbs down to what they're proposing here. Um, but the fact of the matter is there are still a lot of unanswered questions that I'm hearing at least you have and probably other council members have as well. Um, from the developer's perspective, I think he can hear that there are questions that are unanswered as well as some concerns that have been expressed tonight. And I think that, uh, you know, I think the concerns, uh, that have been expressed are pretty, you know, it should be pretty apparent what those issues are. And the developer can take that into consideration, um, as the developer moves forward as well. So, are, do any of the council members believe that we need to, um, take this conversation any further this evening? Or are we prepared to, uh, take the action, take action on what, what's before us? I've lost my.
I would just say, uh, mayor, this is councilwoman Martin. I would just say that I agree with, uh, council. Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yep, we're here. You're, you're here.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I, uh, agree with Councilman Cope's, uh, thoughts. And that I would also say that, uh, without more persuasive, uh, conversation from the developer or the owner. I'm not in, I, I would say that if, if they were looking for an opinion right now, it would not be favorable for me, but I'm willing to be open-minded. So, um, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Cope's also offer that to the developer that we need to have more information. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion before we call the question on this? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero one?
Move approval code.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to, motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero two?
Move approval, Evans.
Second, Cope.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Whoops, did we lose her?
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
There she is. Motion passed. To Councilman Cope's suggestion that a small number, um, be identified to have some further discussion on this, are there volunteers?
A volunteer.
Okay, we've got, uh, Councilman Cope and Councilman Evans. We'll, uh, we'll be following up, uh, to make those arrangements. Thank you. And thank you to, uh, the developer and the residents for, uh, assisting us with that discussion this evening. Moving on to item eight C, consider approval of claims in the amount of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm motion.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Uh, yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. Jim, did you have, uh, anything else that you, you needed to share with us this evening?
I didn't have anything else. I don't know if any of the department heads on the call have anything this evening. It sounds like nothing more, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city council comments. Councilwoman Soroka?
No comments. Thank you.
Councilman Ready?
No comments.
Councilwoman Martin?
No comments.
Councilman, uh, uh, Cope?
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Councilman Evans?
Happy New Year.
Is there a game on? It never happens this quick. The only comment I would make is I just want to thank, um, all of, all of the city council members as well as the staff and, and all of the members of our community for your very, very generous contributions to the mayor's run for food. Um, if you haven't heard, uh, we were able to raise, um, ten thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for the Johnson Food Pantry this year as a result of that effort. And that is just an incredible amount of contribution and generosity from our community. So again, uh, thank you so much. Um, it's going to be a little work, uh, paying back those miles, but it's, it's going to be well worth it. So thanks again.
I think we offered, I remember, I know Councilman Evans offered to walk some miles on a treadmill.
I was just thinking the same thing. You gotta send us some.
I'm pretty sure it was, it might have been Soroka and it might have been me. Uh, we're all, we all kind of look roughly this, Scott's like the us thirty years ago.
Well, maybe, maybe we can work something out. Let's, um, I'll give that some.
As long as you accept walking on a treadmill.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, okay.
Walking is just a slower form of running.
I might even get Davis to help out.
Well, let's, uh, let's talk about that. So anyway, uh, I guess, uh, if there isn't anything else for the good of the order this evening, we will, uh, adjourn the first city council meeting of two thousand twenty-one. Thanks all.
Good night.